Welcome this evening. Today is our annual budget hearing. May I? Get the presentation over and do some. Okay. I think that we have the budget here and before the consensus.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for coming tonight. So tonight, this is pretty much a summation of what we discussed since January. We've got all the meetings, gone through all the budget, all the revenues. The board approved the budget last meeting, and so this is the budget hearing, which I'll summarize everything that we discussed. So proposed budget thirty-five point four two eight million. It's a three point oh seven percent increase. And that is our small capital project. We're looking at doing video cameras outside on that hundred thousand dollar project. Three buses will be purchasing. One of the big things this year is, you know, we've had inflation, so contractual costs, fuel, health insurance, those things have increased a little higher than normal. So that's one of the things that's driving that three point oh seven percent. On the New York State aid side, and I'll go through this on another slide, eight point oh five million. I'll discuss this on the next slide. The tax cap levy was three point one zero percent. And so we want it, we try to, if we can, give some back to the taxpayer. So this will be the ninth out of the last twelve years we've gone under, so two point eight nine percent. This is one of the required items, showing a three-part budget. As you can see, seventy-three percents for teaching, extracurricular, transportation, all the instructional piece for the kids. Thirteen percent for administrative and fourteen percent for capital. And this is pretty much standard percentages through all the districts around New York State. Couple of the highlights that we talked about, we have some elective courses added, printmaking, sculpture, residential maintenance and repair. So those were pretty much cost-neutral programs. Intro software development, we had some science. Those were going to have some textbook costs that we already had budgeted. And then so that one add was robotics for the middle school. We have the high school program. We're actually going to be doing something, I think, kind of with the younger kids over at Crowe or Morris. But we decided to have the middle school robotics this year, and they asked for some funding, so we put three thousand dollars to offset some of their fundraising. Hundred thousand dollar project, as I stated, outdoor video cameras. I'm working on that right now to get coverage from all the buildings. We'll see what we can get for that amount of money. Next slide. So on the revenue side, you can see bottom line, one point oh five six million. State aid, that was one of the big pieces that we've been discussing. You know, the governor was trying to get rid of hold harmless where we'd lose over a million dollars. That money was reinstated, but we do have a decrease this year, and that's because with our evaluations, our property valuations increasing compared to the state average, we are a wealthier, appear to be a wealthier district. So a couple of our reimbursable aids, transportation, both these dropped, that's driving this decrease in aid. And there was, the hold harmless was held, so we get the same aid for operating aid as last year, but there was no increase. So this will be one of the first times where districts are receiving increases, and we're not receiving any of that. To offset that, we have the other revenue slide number. Going up three hundred fifty-two thousand, the big piece driving that is interest income. Rates have gone up. As you've seen across the board, I negotiated with the bank the beginning of the school year. We're over five percent now, and we were under a percent a couple of years ago. So that's driven our, driven that income to offset the state aid. Medicaid up seventeen thousand, slight increase in property taxes, as I stated, two point eight nine percent. And then what we've tried to appropriate and have contingencies built in, one point three million, we've kept the same, but we are using some reserves to bring down the levy and to balance the budget. So when I started twelve years ago, it took us a few years to get that number back to zero. Now we're a little uptick ninety-one thousand, but I feel comfortable with where we're at. Next slide. So to balance the revenues is the expenses, as I stated, three point oh seven percent is the bottom line increase. General support, one point six one, you know, just pretty much some contractual costs and some salaries. That's general support is Board of Education, District Office, audit, legal, but another big piece is operations and maintenance. And with inflation, we've had some contractual costs increase that we had to finally increase the budget for. Instructional piece, pre-K to twelve salaries for all the teachers, assistants, aides, principals. You have guidance, technology, special education's in here, so three point two two percent increase. Transportation, we consolidated some special ed runs to keep this number lower, two point two nine percent increase. Chloe benefits is the big piece. It's driving a lot of the budget, almost four hundred thousand. That's health insurance, which went up seven and a half percent, a little higher than last few years. As you know, as I say, with inflation. And then the retirement system rates both went up slightly, so that's driving that increase. Debt service, we discussed trying to keep that matched pretty neutral and pretty much even it is. And then the last piece is interfund transfers. We talked about the cafeteria, the public library. The three buses we're purchasing and the hundred thousand dollar capital projects. So the increase really here, a little bit on the library and mainly the bus purchases is those costs have gone up. Next slide. So proposed budget thirty-five point four two eight million or three point oh seven percent. Tax cap three point one, we're at two point eight nine. Go to the next one. Two propositions. The budget proposition, then the second one is number two is a nine point five million capital reserve. We've had capital reserves since in my twelve years here, we use them for our capital projects, and we emptied out the last capital reserve to have it pretty much a tax-neutral capital project that the one we just approved. This nine point five million doesn't mean we're going to fund that, but it gives us the opportunity to fund it for the next future capital reserve, as in accordance with our reserve plan. Slide. So we have two seats for the Board of Education. Candidates Linda Collette, Beth Holver, and Nikki Lundie. Where and when? It's at the MED Elementary School Gym next Tuesday from nine AM to nine PM will be the, for the vote. And then budget information, we sent out, we have the budget information page. We sent out the newsletter. We're going to send out the budget notice mailer after this meeting tomorrow. And then we have an email for any questions that need to be addressed. Think that's what I have. So anyone in the audience that has any questions on the budget? This is, you know, an open hearing.
Welcome, Ms. Collette.
Hello. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Linda Collette, and I've been a district resident for fifty years. I've lived in Ghent, behind the Dairy Queen, which if you know, that is one of our national claims to fame, I think is the Dairy Queen. But the reason I'm here tonight is that as a district resident, I want to thank, in the first instance, Mr. Chuddy, and Dr. D'Angelo, Dr. Rude, Mr. Simon, Mr. Thorson, it's here. Mr. Portrains here. And the other building administrators and the supervisors in transportation and maintenance and in food service for putting together this budget that I think is pretty easy to accept as a district resident. These are tough times. We know that, and we know they're going to get a bit tougher financially. So it's not easy to do everything we need to do first and foremost for the students of this district. So I want to say thank you for that. A particular note, and for me in the budget, was the amount that's devoted to things like video camera safety, the kinds of things that we want to have and we need to have in these days. So that being noted, but also just a general thank you for doing what you do to these people for building the budget and to the Board of Education for approving that budget, which of course I know is with your input, because you're all district residents too. So thank you for your time, and I'd like to be in here. Thanks.
Appreciate it. Anybody else in the audience?
Do we have anyone online?
We have ten folks with us online. Online folks, if you'd like to ask a question or make a comment, like this collect, then you can just raise your virtual hand now. Deb, I'm sorry, there's nine online. And no hands. Okay. All right, I just want to reiterate, because it's a scary number, but I understand it, it's meaning. And so that nine point five million dollar capital reserve, that proposition two, we are not asking to put nine point five million dollars into a reserve at this time. It allows us to do that in the event of a future capital project or need in the future. Am I correct? All right. Thanks, Mr. Chuddy. We're going to, may I have a motion to adjourn the budget hearing?
Motion.
All favor.
Hi.
May I have a motion to approve the present agenda?
Second.
Any questions on the present agenda? They all in favor?
Hi.
At this time, we will have a public comment. Anyone in the public may address the board at this time. It does not have to be agenda-specific. This is the open session where you can ask whatever questions you might be. Doesn't look like we have anybody here. To ask you a question?
I think we should test the students tonight. We're going to get the government students. You guys really picked a great night to come.
There are no hands online. All right. Any board comments?
I just wanted feedback. Okay. Baseball near and dear to my heart. So I have to say, our baseball team, the boys varsity baseball team won their patroon conference, three-one against Conic Hills. They're the number one seed in Section Two, Class C. And their first game for the sectionals, I think they call it, is this Thursday at the complex, four o'clock. The girls varsity softball team also won their patroon conference. They are also the number one seed in Class C. And their game is also Thursday in Chadon at five o'clock. I hope I didn't steal your thunder agenda, but I'm very excited about this ball.
Thank you for the reminder. Okay, anybody else? Okay. Moving on to the report from the student representative now. This is going to be made into law. Did you know that? It is. We've been offering it for a while, but I think the legislature, if they have not approved it at this point, they're going to approve a student representative for all boards in the state of New York. So it's exciting stuff. Okay, you're on.
Okay, so I'm going to start with something that happened a couple of weeks ago, but we had Misma solo festival as well as our chorus and band did Misma chorus was for an actual medal, and we got silver, I think. And then for band, we just kind of had the some help and some comments on that. So that was also helpful. We also had our concert a couple of weeks ago, which I think went very well. As we said before, varsity baseball and softball won the patroon conference, and they'll be moving on to sectionals later. And then Alex Schwab won individual patroon conference in tennis for championship singles, which is also very impressive. Moving on, there's a lot of current up and coming things. Currently, we have AP exams going on, started last week and going through this week. There's also patroons coming up tomorrow for track and field, and then sectionals for all sports, as I said before. So everyone kind of finishing up their sport seasons. Band is also preparing for marching in the parade on Memorial Day. So we're already practicing out on the track, getting ready to march and perform those pieces. And then our ensembles are preparing for Music in the Park, which is coming up as well. Very soon coming up is the Senior Capstone Presentations, which are this Friday, actually. And then the AP Lit class is starting them now, so we'll be presenting those on June fourth. Seniors are also preparing expo boards, getting ready for the end of the year and showing off all of the achievements that we all have. So it's sports, academics, as well as showing off their capstones. That will be something that is happening very soon. Then the Arbor Day banquet's also coming up for seniors, which is May twenty-second, and then the next day, there will be the Arbor Day activities on May twenty-third. So a lot of senior things going on. And then Wednesday, May twenty-ninth, is the National Art Honor Society induction ceremony. So that's for students who have been in art for many years and are showing excellence in that. And then June fourth is when we have the first Regents exam, which would be algebra, and then the next block of Regents exams will start June fourteenth. And then finally, we have the NHS induction on June tenth. So a lot of things going on at the end of the year. Yeah.
Does anybody know when the Music in the Park?
Oh, I was going to ask that question. Yeah, it's coming up very soon.
I like to actually ask these questions out loud, so that the audience can hear it. So Music in the Park, we think is on the twelfth? On the twelfth. And what time is that? Okay. Probably at five o'clock, might be on the calendar. The senior expo. Six to eight. Thank you very much. That's, that's the senior expo, that's the Music in the Park. And then the senior expo, do we know what date that is? Brett, do you have your calendar handy there? Senior Expo? June fifth at six PM. Thank you.
Anything else?
Yeah, and then the Arts Honor Society, now Jenna, we're all, on the twenty-ninth, we're all going to be interviewing, right? So we're probably not going to make it, but what time is the Arts Honor Society? Yeah. Okay. Seven PM. So we, I think we'll all, we'll extend our our thanks to the Honor Society, but also our congratulations to anybody being inducted to the Honor Society. None of us are going to make it. So I apologize for that. And the Arbor Day, it's celebration for the public. Is it open for the public or are we closing that to campus? Just the students, right? Okay. All right. All right, thanks. Okay, updates from the superintendent.
Brett, when's my next dentist appointment? Can you tell me that on my calendar? Thank you. Fred and Jenna stole a couple of our items here, but just a reminder, we do ask the community to come out and vote on Tuesday, MED Gym, nine AM to nine PM. Jenna also mentioned the Senior Capstone this Friday, the seventeenth, but just a reminder for the rest of our parents, there's, there is school that day, but it's an early dismissal, so that we can get in our session day, and then all the staff convene at the high school for this annual well-anticipated event. Monday, the twentieth, the board has, will have, has a special meeting where they'll immediately go into executive session and meet with the superintendent search consultant. That begins at five thirty. We've been going over these dates, but the first round of interviews will take place the week of Memorial Day, the twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth, and thirtieth, with the second round taking place on June eleventh, twelfth, and thirteenth. Today, Mike and I met with our architects and our construction managers. And previously, we stated that the bid opening of the second iteration of our bids was scheduled for May twenty-first, but we received from feedback from some contractors who've asked, just like we did last time, to extend the date by a week. They feel that they need that to be able to provide us with accurate, or with responses. And again, we don't want to, we want to give every opportunity for contractors to reply to our request for bids. And so we've moved that to now May thirtieth, which is also an evening that we're committed to here at the high school. So a lot of, a lot of dates have some conflicts going on, and that bid opening is here in the library from three to five PM. On May twenty-fourth, Friday, the district will be closed. That is the unused snow day gift act, yeah, contractually. So just a reminder to everyone that this district will be fully closed on that day. And that is my quick overview tonight.
That was good. That's because Jenna and I stole some of them. Operational update, Mr. Chucky?
This is Sal stated, you know, the capital projects are really the update right now. So we're hoping to get some general contractors and move this along.
Very good. All right, so we've got some board committees to hear from. And I know you've been working feverishly on the policy committee. Give us a rundown.
So we met on May eighth. We have finished our review of the seven thousand, thousand series, which is the series of policies regarding students. Okay, also the eight thousands regarding construction, instruction. Oh, I'm too close to the speaker. I see. So we've run, run through everything. So now we're just working on the modified policies and tapping it up, and we hope to have the available for you guys to have a first reading on May twenty-first. Just coming up. To you, there's a lot of work to do, but we'll get there. We'll have, and I'll have them for you in advance, so you can review them before the board meeting that night. Okay, that's it.
I, I realize that between the work that Pat and the committee launched last year, you will follow through this year. Ever seen a district go through every policy so quickly. So nice work to you and Pat. But yeah, very nicely done. Public Library Advisory Committee.
Yes, that's on my, I sent my report. It's libraries have been very active the month of April. This is just the highlights. We had four hundred, four thousand four hundred and forty-two visits to the library in the month of April. Seventy-six total programs were held at the library. And six hundred and sixty-two people attended the programs. This is, this is a hotspot over there. That's, this is what, listen. Her husband didn't believe her. He counted up himself. They, there was that Music in the Library Concert with the Wickers Creek Band, Bluegrass Band, seventy people attended that. The Ghent Band is going to be there in July. I will inform, they don't know if it's going to be the fifth or the eighth. They're going to, I'll inform you when that's going to be. And we received a total of grants and gifts in the month of April of twenty-nine thousand dollars. One was from Michelle Henji. Then there was a private, a bequest from a private estate, and then Dee Dee Barrett, and then a grant from Brookshire De Comic Foundation. So it's it's a hotspot. It's great.
It's really terrific.
Yeah.
If you have any influence, the fifth is the senior expo, so if we can get the fifth is the senior expo. Also, if we can get the music done.
Oh, it is.
Oh, July?
This is at night.
Is this, you're talking June or July? The band, the Ghent Band. July, John?
It would be July, just, I don't know. I'll report.
All right, if, if it is June fifth, we might bump them to the eighth, or not bump them, but negotiate with them to the eighth, that'd be great. But thank you very much for that.
Hey. Keep going.
Okay. All right, we have new business. First one is to, we have some library materials that we need to have. Yes.
Civil, I have one more thing.
Go ahead.
The civil service. I thought this was great. They started a civil service. A new program. A new monthly program called Civil Service one oh one. This is a great thing she's done. They had nine attendees for the first session. It's an informal conversation with staff members of Columbia County Civil Service. So the invitation, come explore employment and career opportunities, see current vacancies, and sign up for an exam. Complete an application, ask questions, and learn what Columbia County Civil Service is all about. That's a wonderful program.
I wonder, you said that was for current civil service employees?
No, it's for, no, anybody who is interested in becoming and taking the exam.
Great. Yep. Excellent. Graduates, seniors, recent graduates, that's not a bad thing to attend. Okay. All right, so we have a motion to designate withdrawn high school library materials. This is presented by Donna Eager, the librarian. This is just a regular process of wading through books.
Done the high school before. This is the first time.
Okay.
Yeah.
So mostly it's surplus or data items, things that you know, are outdated or what have you. Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Any questions? All favor?
Hi.
We have a motion to award the Chadon Central School District twenty twenty-three capital improvement project for the EV bus charger. This will go to Electric Electrical LLC out of East Syracuse.
Hold on that motion for a second.
Okay.
Can we maybe amend this real quick? It looks like maybe there's a typo, and I'm not, I don't have the award letter here, but definitely in the the motion. There's either the comma's in the wrong place, or there's too many zeros.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, that's a good point. It is all four thousand eight hundred, so we need to omit an extra zero there. All right, so we did a great numbers on this one. That's good.
The award letter looks right.
Good catch.
I can't see it.
Let me open it up. Yeah, the award, the award leather, letter, it's forty-nine thousand eight hundred. Good catch, Matt. May I have a motion for the forty-nine thousand eight hundred, not whatever number that might be?
Motion.
Second.
All right. Any questions? All of you.
All right.
Motion to approve the memorandum of agreement with CCSTA. And this is the Chadon Central School District looking to have which motion is this, the?
The dean for twenty-four.
Twenty-four, twenty-five, excellent. To allow for a dean of students at the MED for an additional year to go through June twenty-six, twenty, or June twenty-seven, twenty twenty-five. Any questions as to this, Emily? All right. All in favor?
All right.
Motion to approve the disposal of some equipment. This is again, sort of a normal process this time of year. We have a driver's, a vehicle, a school bus, number one seventy-two, to be retired. You know, mechanical issues and just, you know, standard surplus. Any questions? We have motion?
Motion.
All right.
All right.
And motion to accept the consensus agenda J through L? Are there any questions on the?
We filled a couple of positions that we'd had problems filling, that's for sure.
Yeah, that's actually, we, we got, we got the sub-schools and just the speech pathologist. What was the third one that we did there? I thought there was three. The third one won't be on till the next, okay, all right, very good.
I, I would like to just reiterate the thanks to the state of Miss Nary there. That was really
I'm sorry.
The, the donation, the library donation. Of Karen Nary, that was really kind.
Yeah. Yep. Anybody else on this?
Second. Second. All right.
Are there any, any motions? Any items for future agenda? Okay. Moving on, we are back to the second public comment. This is the one that we asked you to be specific about the agenda. Does anybody in the audience? I think this class is you, Drew. Have any questions? All right. Sally, anyone? Oh. Yes, all right. Vote somebody?
Good evening, everyone. I hope you guys are all doing well.
Good evening, everyone. I hope you guys are all doing well. I'm sitting outside on the porch where the weather is fantastic. So I hope you guys get to get out there soon. I just wanted to tag on to what Jenna said in her student representative report about the capstone project, which is, is this coming Friday. And just give a shout out to Megan Connolly, who has incorporated this into our English class and to Ashley Keegan, who leads the senior team and all the members on the senior team, who have worked with the seniors in getting them ready for this capstone presentation. And I know Beth is coming on Friday and the kids are nervous. They've been practicing, they've been rehearsing. You know, they've, they've got a ton of questions, but this is such a great experience for them. And I'm, I'm so glad that, that the Chatham District supports this and encourages this as a, as the capstone final for our, for our seniors. And I also just wanted to reiterate that Wednesday, June 5th, is the senior expo and awards night. And if you can please, please, please put that on your calendars and come, at least for the expo part, to see the, the boards that the seniors put together. It's just the best, it's the best night. It's such a great celebration of the seniors and everything that they've done in their high school time and to celebrate them and to, to get the momentum going for graduation. It's just such a great event. So, you know, I just put that on your calendars and come if you can. Thank you.